Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call, all members are present. First thing on the agenda is election of chairperson and vice chair. Is there any nominations for chairman? I'll run the meeting until you boot me out.
I nominate Warren for chair.
I second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, do put myself back as chairman. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Motion carries three in favor, none against, one abstention. Do I have a motion to elect the vice chair? I'll nominate Ken.
I second.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion to nominate Ken as our vice chair. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Motion carries three in favor, none against, one abstention.
Yes.
Approval of the agenda. We have the agenda presented in front of you, is there any changes or corrections that need to be done?
I, Warren, I just added like the emails that I got today, so they were laying on your desk.
Okay.
So that's just an addition to the packet.
That'd be an addition to the public hearing?
Yes.
Right, okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move that we...
Motion by Barry, seconded by Linda.
Yeah.
Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the November 9th, 2020 regular meeting. Is there any changes, corrections? If not, do I have a motion to approve the November 9th, 2020 meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Linda, do I have a... Ken seconded it. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. This brings us to our public hearing. I will recess the regular planning commission meeting, and we will now go into our public hearing. We have a public hearing before us tonight, zoning map amendment for a mixed-use commercial residential planned unit development overlay district. It is our intention that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. If you wish to speak regarding this matter, please sign in on the sign up sheet at the back of the room. When you approach the podium to speak, please state your name and address for the record. The procedure is as follows: we will have staff presentation followed by questions of staff, then the applicant's input followed by questions of applicant, then we will have public input, questions for clarification by the public, public in favor of the proposal, public speaking against the proposal. After everyone who wishes to speak has had the opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed. After closure of the public hearing, the planning commission will deliberate and take action as appropriate. Members of the audience do not participate in the commission's discussion unless a majority of the planning commission concedes to hear additional information or questions. The hearing is now in session. I think Vicki has got...
Hello, everybody. I just wanted to start this off a little bit, just to kind of provide you some context about what we're doing here tonight. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Vicki Willer, I'm the city administrator for Sauk Center. I have been working with Steve Klick over the past seven years on potential opportunities for development, so we have been working on this for quite some time. I'm happy so many people have taken an interest in this. A lot of times this room sits really empty at meetings, so I like it when we have lots of people here. I do understand there are concerns over the proposal, and I'm hopeful we'll be able to provide some clarity, so everyone is comfortable with what we're here discussing tonight. This is a public hearing, as the mayor said. We will be taking public comment and questions in the overall proposal, as well as read into the record a lot of comments that we have received, so we will have some reading going on. Currently, the golf course is just that, it's a golf course. I'm sure many of you would like it to remain a golf course. However, golf courses nationwide are kind of going through a metamorphosis and are needing to change how they operate in order to survive. Some have closed, they've sold out to housing developers, some have added condominiums, some have added housing along every fairway, some have been converted to industrial parks, some have integrated other recreational facilities. The current owner of the old course in Sauk Center, Steve Klick, wants it to remain a golf course. However, in order for him to be able to preserve it as a golf course, he's proposing some development in a mixed-use fashion that will help him to do just that. The hearing tonight is to review and take input on the concept of a mixed-use planned unit development. We aren't talking nuts and bolts here, we're talking big picture. For those of you that are familiar with planning, it's come out looking down at it from 30,000 feet, what would this look like? As you have seen, and many of you reviewed the proposal, he's proposing a combination of varied uses and provided a plan as to where they could potentially be integrated into the course. The overall plans include a docking system, potential water preference, a beach, an outdoor venue, might accommodate an outdoor event or wedding, a hotel or a lodge that could accommodate stay and play options, maybe a pool or water park, vacation rental, some single-family homes, townhomes or condominiums, and recreational retail opportunities. These are all the types of things that potentially could be allowed there. I know you'll have questions on specifics, which will be part of the overall process, but this first step is to look at what a mixed-use planned unit development district would look like. This overlay takes the form of an ordinance and it basically hovers over the golf course and provides parameters to work within for future development. Any of the components of the plan, when implemented, still come back to the city or other governing agencies prior to approval. For example, residential lots would need to be planted, that would be a public hearing. Permits would need to be required from the DNR if they were doing a dock or a beach. Utilities would need to be extended. Permits or parking would need to comply with our existing city code. Stormwater would need to be addressed. There are steps down the road that will dig into those details. The PUD plan does not exempt the course from meeting those requirements. And I know a lot of people have questions on how that's all going to work. A lot of the comments we got are more nuts and bolts and not this overall concept that we're talking about tonight. So Sarah Morton is a city planner, she's going to go over the proposal, and Aaron is here on behalf of Steve Klick, and he has a little bit of a PowerPoint to kind of show you and kind of give you an idea of what their future vision is. And after that's all done and the questions have been answered from the council, of course, we will read into the record about 25 pages of emails, and then you'll each have an opportunity that wish to speak to come up and also address your concerns. The council may, but is not required, to take action tonight. The action may be simply to table it and to send us back to the table and help work on drafting an ordinance. They also have the option of denying it and they have the option of approving it. So those are kinds of the three things. Typically, on a proposal of this size, we would not receive action other than tabling it to a future meeting. So I just, so you know that there's work to be done, and this is kind of that big first, put it out there, to get this overlay over the top of everything, to see what potential development could look like. So at this point, Sarah, I don't know if you have something to say or if you're going to turn it over to Aaron. I'm going to go with first help Aaron grasp, and then I'll turn it over to Aaron.
So the part of my staff report is information that we did receive an application from Steve and Klick via Aaron Feltman, he is the general manager of the golf course. And as Vicki said, they want to put into place a planned unit development overlay district on those two parcels of land, which is the golf course and then that strip of land across the road, and they have a Lake Shore lot. A planned unit development is a type of building development and also a regulatory process as building development or redevelopment of a property. It is designed to help design grouping of both varied compatible land uses such as housing, recreation, and lower intensity commercial uses, all within a contained development or subdivision. And so the applicant was Aaron, on behalf of Steve and Klick. And the action requested much later will be to approve this mixed-use commercial development. And Aaron does have a presentation, if you want to start that.
I thought you were going up here? It's fine. Need the light turned on? Need the light turned on?
Like you said, I'm Aaron Feltman. My address is actually 601 Lake Shore Drive, so I've got a vested interest in this as well. So I live in the neighborhood, work right across the street at the golf course, and like Vicki said, this is not the nuts and bolts of the project, this is the 30,000 feet above, this is our 15, 20, 30-year plan that we would love to see happen for this community. So just going to walk you through some basics. Again, this was all brought to our attention because we want to do some marina slips, so that marina option has to be done under the mixed use. So this is kind of even further out than we're hoping right now. We want the marina slips as kind of the first thing, the first step, where we want to move forward. Many of you know we've started pickleball courts and some rental options as well, and kayaks and paddleboards and maybe a fishing boat or a pontoon would be involved in that marina. So that's kind of what brought us to this evening, so just appreciate you all coming out and hope we can have some great dialogue about this. So here's the course as it sits from not quite 30,000 feet, but 5,400 feet, so gives you an idea. Just kind of threw this together with this proposal, and like I said, I appreciate you guys coming out for some dialogue on this. So currently, the course up on the northeast corner has an option of doing some residential lots. So there's a few ideas of residential lots that could possibly go in on the course for some golf course living, with some lake views and some options there. So beautiful option for lots up there. This again would probably be further down the road, but we believe the city of Sauk Center could really use a resort or a family-style resort hotel that could be used, indoor water park, convention center, and just 30 to 40 rooms, nothing huge, but enough to accommodate those tourists that come. Again, making that more family-style, so we can invite families to come and enjoy what Sauk Center has to offer. So just some basic ideas there. Everybody able to see those okay up there? Like Vicki mentioned, maybe an outdoor venue next to the hotel, place for weddings overlooking the lake, we've got beautiful views. Sauk Center is a gorgeous lake. And golf course and an outdoor venue like this, we just see that as a real benefit to the community and to wedding, planning events and stuff like that. Here's for those that would maybe want to do some really onsite living, so some condo units, maybe doing a few of those, three or four of those up there, so maybe an eight-plex kind of deal. You could pull in from a private road, have lake shore views, again, marina access and golf course living at its finest there. And here's what brought us to where we're at tonight. This is the marina area here, there's about 460 feet of lake shore there, and we would love to offer some kayaks, paddleboards, some rental options, just for those that come to Sauk Center to visit, so if they're doing a stay and play for the golfing, gives them some options for going out fishing as well, and then using those kayaks and paddleboards. The docks that we're looking at are a floating dock, so they're going to have less impact on the environment there as well. As we're working with the hydrologists and the DNR, those seem to be the best option. They're floating, you anchor them in, and they're easy to maneuver, as well as having In the middle of the golf course, there is some opportunities for some twin homes or patio homes available as well. This whole area here could be a cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac living. Like Vicki said, there's a lot of courses that have gone to homes on every fairway, and this would be something similar to that where your back patio overlooks the golf course and you have kind of cul-de-sac living there. So just some ideas again. With this association, there'd be like a little activity center lounge area, so if you have family in town, they'd have a place to meet, game room or just a meeting area, so that could have multiple uses for the association as well as a golf course and those that use a golf course for meetings. Here's something that probably has piqued a lot of interest is the possibility of apartments on the complex here. So along number two or the old main street there, there is quite a bit of room, actually, and these would be almost across from the current apartments that are over there as well. But these would be protected on the side of the golf course, but give you golf course views. It'd be like a market value apartment complex, so these would have like a tuck-under garage, so there wouldn't be a lot of need for parking out front, just visitors, and then the rest could be underneath the building itself. There's similar units, you know, in Alexandria, Glenwood, that have those tuck-under garages, and you're looking at maybe 30 to 60 units depending on if you use front and backside, or in this case, east or west side. So like the west side here would have views of the golf course and the lake. So little play area, you know, family-friendly apartments there, community lounge in the apartment housing there, so. This again, like we're talking nuts and bolts, you know, we don't know if this is going to be next year or 15 years from now, so this is just kind of a broad overview of what you could expect, or that we would look forward to doing here, vacation rental homes or cottages along hole number eight there. Those again would have, be very similar to the residential neighborhood that's already there, and just have access for, again, stay and play options for golfers that want to come and enjoy the weekend there, or the midweek. So here's our current pickleball rental courts. We've seen a great uptick in their use. They were open this summer, and this fall they were used almost regularly. So pickleball, bocce, croquet, we've also got the beanbag toss, and this fall we had a great turnout, we invited a food truck to come in and some axe throwing, and it was just, it was awesome to see the social gathering that the course was. The course has been around since 1921, so we're celebrating our 100th year this year, and it was just really neat to hear some of the stories of the people that were there. We had 80-year-olds out throwing axes and actually had one of the highest scores there was for the night, but they went home early, so they didn't get to finish the tournament. But just really neat to see kind of the social club. If you guys grew up golfing or anything like that, you know how important that was to the members and stuff like that, just to get together, to hang out, to socialize, and that's really kind of a dream of ours, is to bring that back and to give the community a place to go and just hang out and enjoy time together with their families. And of course, to do all this, we'd have to move our maintenance shop. Our maintenance shop is currently right in the center of the golf course. So what that would do is allow us like a two-story, or it'd be more of a walkout style or drive-out style, so our maintenance shop would sit in here and doors would go out towards the course here. And then up above, the options are kind of limitless there, so we could do a convention center, we could do a simulator, we could do a little restaurant, axe throwing, little mini bowling alley, so just family fun kind of stuff there. So again, this would be probably on top of the maintenance building there. Or another option could be housing, if so be it, but the dream that I would have would be to have a little mini restaurant up there with a family fun center for the community. And that's about it that I have. So again, thank you for your time and appreciate you all coming out for this.
So the comments I have received, as Vicki stated, I have some emails, and I want to make sure I get through... I think I'm going to start reading some of those now, because those would be the comments.
Sarah, you want to pull your mic down a little bit? Thank you.
Is that better?
That's better.
One of the emails was from Alta Hanson, and her property is 749 Lake Shore Drive. Sarah, I have lived at 749 Lake Shore Drive since 1955. Over the years, Lake Shore Drive has existed as a quiet, single-family residential area between Sauk Lake and the old course. To say that the proposed rezoning would change the character of this neighborhood is to completely understate the consequence of this appalling proposal. It would totally transform this quiet residential area into a crowded commercial area with increased traffic and noise on both the lake and the street, introduce a constant flow of strangers, and substantially reduce the physical appeal and value, and even the safety of the established residences. The question also arises as to the cost of installing utilities to service these enterprises, water, sewer, street, upkeep, and even law enforcement. Will these costs fall to the city and eventually to the taxpayers? I strongly am opposed to the rezoning development amendment and application from the Steve and Klick Trust as proposed, respectfully, Alta Hanson. I received another one from Scott and Whitney Rutton, their address is 637 Lake Shore Drive. Hi, Sarah, I would like to offer our concerns for the Tuesday, January 12th, 4:30 PM meeting regarding the rezoning development application that was recently submitted on the old course. We received a letter from the city last week with limited information about the proposal and with little time to provide feedback. After receiving additional information, here are our concerns. The north end of the golf course, where a 60-volt slip marina proposal, is a very narrow road with no room for parking. This area is also adjacent to single-family homes and will cause congestion and present an increased risk of accidents to both vehicles and pedestrians. There are already vacation rental homes and the new main street apartment complex in the area. The proposal has a significant increase in the potential population density, the hotel, resort, retail store, additional vacation rental homes, townhomes, apartments would not blend well and would negatively affect nearby Lake Shore property owners with the current neighborhood of single-family homes. We purchase our home as it is in the city limits and as it is a single-family home neighborhood, not a high-density commercial use neighborhood. For these reasons, we are opposed to rezoning the old golf course from its current single-family residential zoning format. Okay, I have an email from Anna Schmull, their address is, can you hear me? Okay. Their address is 901 Lake Shore Drive. Hi, Sarah, this email is for the public hearing Tuesday. We are greatly concerned about the proposed plan. I've attached a Word document with those concerns. Please read it at the meeting as we can attend. Sorry for its length, it's important to us. First of all, I would like to thank you all for taking the time to listen to our concerns. A special thank you to Sarah for reading this for me, as I am not able to attend this meeting. Cons to the public marina. Floating docks, environmental impact. The application states the dock will be mostly floating. Please consider the following. Construction destroys plants. Sanger and Holland, that's a paper written, I think, as an environmental study, noted there is a path along each side of one new dock where vegetation has almost completely been destroyed likely during construction. Two, oil-based preservatives containing creosote, CRT, or penta-chlorophenol, PCP, apply to the surface of wood materials leach and have repeatedly demonstrated toxic effects. Three, wood that is pressure-treated with chromate copper arsenate, CCA, is the most commonly-used material for pilings and decking for small docks. The form of CCA most often seen is comprised of 47.5% hexavalent chromic oxide, 18.5% of cupric oxide, and 34% arsenic pentoxide. Research has shown that leaching occurs. There have been extensive studies regarding the effects of the toxicity of these compounds in an aquatic environment, none of which favor a positive outcome. Elevated concentrations of metals from the CCA-treated wood can be found in organisms living on treated docks, including floating docks. Four, floating docks typically use polyurethane foam, PS. It is easy to get, cheap, and it floats. Downside is it is a significant pollutant. Polystyrene foam pollutes through the fragmentation of expanded polystyrene, E, PS, and extruded poly... polystyrene, X, PS, used in docks and floats. Six, when the encapsulated PS foam from the docks and floats come into contact with their surroundings, the sun, wind, waves, ice, and burrowing animals, the foam breaks apart and is released into the environment. These small foam pieces are persistent in the environment and pose a risk to fish and wildlife through ingestion and exposure to chemicals. PS foam can contain two types of chemicals: additives and polymetric raw materials originating from the plastics, and two, the chemicals absorbed from the surrounding environment. Over time, these chemicals leach out of the plastic, acting as a toxic chemical. These chemicals negatively impact wildlife growth, survival, feeding, reproduction, and even swimming habits and behaviors of fish. PS foam leaches styrene, benzene, and ethyl benzene, which have been toxic properties. They state a case for a thyson from 2018. PS foam is one of the top items of debris found on our shorelines, beaches, and surface water around the world. PS foam is one of the top items of debris found on our shorelines, beaches, and surface water around the world. Boat traffic, environmental impact. Boat propellers directly damage submerged aquatic vegetation in shallow waters, which takes years to heal. Contamination from boat motor fuel discharges must be considered. There will be substantial shoreline erosion, not just at the marina itself, but to all the shoreline property caused by a substantial increase in boat traffic in the area. One must also factor in resuspension of bottom sediment and turbines. Three, lack of parking, lack of restrooms, lack of trash containment everywhere, lack of fish cleaning station. Clearly, all of these are evident and problematic. Safety and property values. A, if the clearly evident environmental issues aren't enough to discourage this development, safety should be of utmost importance. 60 boats plus kayaks plus paddleboards plus a private beach is a huge hazard. Accidents will happen. The amount of car traffic will also greatly increase in that area and on the roads leading to it. This neighborhood is just that, a neighborhood. You live here with our families and you're putting them at risk for both injury on the road and on the lake. B, property values. There are two homes directly adjacent to this location. The homeowners have supported this town for years. They have raised and are raising families here. They work and have worked and worked here. They shop here. They contribute to our community on a daily basis. This marina would destroy all they have invested in their homes and to this town. C, a shuttle service to the golf course is incredibly dangerous. Lake Shore Drive is a narrow road. There are no parking options. There'd be a dramatic increase in cars, plus a small bus, van, shuttle, plus a small bus or van, children, people constantly back and forth. That would be unsafe. Cons to rezoning for commercial units. Hotel, indoor/outdoor venue, vacation rentals. One, single-family home neighborhood. A hotel with a waterpark and outdoor venue for concerts, weddings, receptions, et cetera, that blasts loud music and singing until 2 AM in a single-family neighborhood is absurd. To start with, the construction would cause a plethora of environmental issues. I'll highlight just one, noise pollution. The longevity of noise pollution from not only the initial construction but continued use of this space would be detrimental to all of us who live in this neighborhood. Research has shown that consistent noise pollution can lead to health conditions such as cardiovascular disease, sleep disturbance, tinnitus, cognitive impairment in children, and annoyance. This development would not only destroy our neighborhood, but affect the health and safety of all who live here. B, many of us invested in our property, our homes in this area because it is a neighborhood. This area is not meant to be an attraction. It is not Disney World. Leave some green space, there's already enough development. No one wants to live next door to a hotel or event center. Not here, not anywhere. It will destroy our property value. B, we have two small children. Their safety and well-being and that of other children in this neighborhood is of utmost importance. The increase in car traffic, pollution, and visitors in our neighborhood from this resort proposal is not safe for our children. Vacation rentals. A, this neighborhood isn't breezy point and brainard and we don't want to be. There are already several resorts presently around the lake and I feel we should help support these resorts who have been here for years, have positively contributed to this town, who have invested their lives, invested their lives to their business and have likely been struggling greatly because of COVID-19. A long way resort with a hotel, vacation rentals, entertainment, and every other shiny new toy he has in mind is basically a slap in the face to those businesses who depend on us. I personally, I grew up here. I always knew I wanted to return here after college. While pursuing my education, I lived in large cities and suburbs. I did not like it. I wanted my future family to live at Sauk Center for the peacefulness, quietness, and safety it offers. I was thrilled when about 10 years, an opportunity for me to move back home happened. We bought a home built by the students at the Sauk Center High School. My husband bought a chiropractic practice in town. I'm an optometrist in town also. We live in this town to help others. We live in this neighborhood because it's beautiful. Our neighbors are great, it's quiet and safe. I'm not like the large cities. It's not like the large cities or overcrowded suburbs. It is a perfect place to raise our kids. If this rezoning is allowed to happen, it will be just like the overcrowded suburbs. Please consider the families who are here each and every day. Consider the amount that our neighbors contribute to this town each day, not some tourists who come here for a few days a year. With all due respect, this isn't about making the town better, it's purely about money. It's about a perceived notion that the town will somehow greatly benefit from it and won't. It will help the person who owns a resort who is planning on offering food, gas, liquor, bait, et cetera, at the resort. Resort borrowers aren't going to venture to these establishments elsewhere when everything is right there, that they're right there. That's like saying people who go on vacation to an all-inclusive property readily go to their local bars for drinks. They don't, why would they? It will hurt our businesses that offer these services already. Respectfully, this rezoning is just going to make a millionaire more money while destroying a neighborhood, decreasing our property value, putting our children's safety at risk, polluting the lake and the surrounding environment, and hurting existing businesses. Please ask yourselves, would you want to live next door to this resort? Thank you for your time, Anna Schmoll. Jerry Moffett, property is at 643 Lake Shore Drive. To Sarah Morton, my name is Jerry Moffett and I live at 643 Lake Shore Drive. I am sending you this message to let you know I am against the proposed rezoning and development of the old golf course property. We live in a quiet neighborhood and with the new development, this will cause many concerns. One, increasing the property taxes. Two, increasing congestion on the roads with parking concerns. Three, commercial truck and vehicle traffic increase causing problems with the streets. Four, increased boat traffic on the lake. Our neighborhood will never be the same if this is allowed to move forward. Thank you, Jerry Moffett. Ken and Mary Nelson, 861 Lake Shore Drive. To the Sauk Center Planning Commission, as a homeowner at 861 Lake Shore Drive for 45-plus years, we completely oppose turning our residential neighborhood into a commercial area. The increased traffic on our road and on the lake would have a great negative impact on the lives of our family and also on the lives of our neighbors. We do not oppose progress, but upwarding the lives of single-home residents of many years to increase dollar profits or revenue for a business venture appears to be undemocratic. Not considering the residents of the areas is something that should not be permitted to happen. Respectfully submitted, Mary and Ken Nelson, their 861 Lake Shore Drive. Larry Bestine, 823 Lake Shore Drive. I would like to offer my opinion on the proposed plan to rezone the old golf course. I feel it is ill-advised and ill-conceived. I would like, I would like, I would think my options are far more, are for most of us in, I'm sorry. I would think my options are for more, I'm sorry. I would think my opinions are for most of us on Lake Shore Drive. As it stands now and from what I can see on the lake, there are plenty of boats, kayaks, paddleboards. There are already, and there are already enough and to add as many as 60 would congest the area to unsafe and overcrowding. And if I wanted to live next door to a hotel, waterpark, vacation home, and a slew of commercial enterprises, I would have stayed in the cities and bought a place near Treasure Island. That is not what Sauk Center is or has been about and I hope it never is. Our Lake Shore Drive is too small and narrow to accommodate these facilities comfortably and safely. I really don't want to see boat trailers and many extra vehicles parked on our street as I don't see any facilities for parking on the plans and I also don't see anything accommodating restrooms, facilities. I haven't seen, I have, I have had several dealings with city planners and city councils. They're almost without exception. The people that are in the area get run over by the councils. Please, please, please do not, please, please, please do the right thing. Do not approve this rezoning plan. Larry Bestine. Do you want to do one, Vicky?
Jerry, the whole, Vicky's longer. Yes, Sarah, I'm going to interrupt here. Could you please speak louder, this is Anton, or who's speaking?
I am.
Okay, okay. We can hear you up here.
Isn't that speaker above your head?
It is, but the volume kept going down and down.
Okay.
You were reading and now it's Anton, so thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Okay. This one is from Kathleen Seeben at 895 Lake Shore Drive. Says, my name is Kathleen Seeben. Following the death of my father, Paul Seeben, in 2020, I moved back to Sauk Center and into our family home at 895 Lake Shore Drive. I'm writing this email to address concerns I have regarding Steven Klick's rezoning request for the old golf course property. I appreciate that Mr. Klick came to Sauk Center with good intentions of making improvements to the old golf course. He has done a great job of maintaining and improving the property ever since. However, after reviewing his application, I don't believe he is presenting the right plan for this property. I realize that some of my concerns are steeped in nostalgia. We will celebrate 100 years of this golf course this year. That history has a meaning, has to mean something to Sauk Center as a whole. My parents, Paul and Crystal Seeben, had a longtime family membership at the country club, as did many of their friends. We took part in many family activities over the years. I was recently contacted by someone writing a book about the course's history, I believe at the request of Mr. Klick. That made me think Mr. Klick also appreciated what this course has meant to the residents of Sauk Center. To restyle and rezone the course into a hotel, resort, with waterpark, outdoor and indoor entertainment venues, retail stores, grocery, bait, and off-sale liquor, vacation rental homes, townhomes, apartments, and patio homes, seems to me tantamount to tearing down the Bryant Library or the Palmer House. Aside from nostalgia, there are other issues to consider. Those of us who live near the old course chose this area because of the serenity, the beautiful open space of the course, and the close proximity of a clean and lovely lake. Adding a beach and marina with up to 60 boat slips, watercraft rentals, game areas, bait and gas availability, and boat-up shuttles to a small strip of land in the midst of a wholly designated residential area with a narrow street does not seem feasible or reasonable. Combine that with the course plan previously mentioned and it easily brings to mind safety, parking, and noise, as well as an increase in roadway and other infrastructure costs. The quality of life in Sauk Center is important to everyone who lives here. Many people use Lake Shore Drive for walking, biking, and enjoying a pleasant drive around town. Construction, increased traffic, and increased noise will affect all of us. I understand the project may seem like an improvement to the city by bringing in folks who will stay and possibly shop or eat outside the old course property, but at what cost to the residents of Sauk Center as a whole? What if this huge project fails? Please do not approve the rezoning request at this time. Many issues need to be addressed and the residents of Sauk Center, whether you live near the old course area or not, deserve more information about this project. Additionally, many Sauk Center residents are spending the winter out of state. I recently spoke to one of my out-of-state neighbors. He said he did not receive the notice of public hearing. When discussed, we both had different interpretations of what it described. Both of us were wrong. The timing of this application and hearing, feel like the project is being rushed through the process to take advantage of residents being out of state. Thank you for your time and consideration. The next one is Missy Trager, 919 Lake Shore Drive. I wanted to express my thoughts on the proposed ideas at the old course. I do not think that creating this much traffic on land or in water is in the best interest of the homeowners in this neighborhood. Many people have decided to move or build here because of the beautiful tranquility and this proposal puts that in jeopardy. The lake traffic would pose an accident risk that shouldn't be there and the land development into something that is not single-family residential would ruin the value of the neighborhood monetarily and wreck the serenity. The next one from Lance in Pegmead, 761 Lake Shore Drive. First of all, we would like to thank Amy Kotke for bringing to our attention more clearly than the letter we received from the City of Sauk Center without much notice about rezoning of the old golf course and Lake Shore property plans. We are totally against the whole proposal. Many of us bought our homes for some peace and recreation. We enjoy what we have and do not want another town across the road. We have a nice amount of activity on the lake in the summer and holiday, also through the winter. We bring plenty of traffic the way it is, we want to keep it that way. What will this proposal do to our roads, traffic, and noise? What about the infrastructure? What will construction do to the area? What is the DNR input on the 60 boat slips? There will be no control who will be renting the vacation houses. We encountered that this past summer. The language and obnoxious behavior that was heard and then waking up with them sleeping on the roof and all over the yard. If Mr. Klick wants to invest his money, why does he not bring business into the empty buildings downtown? Businesses that would draw people to Sauk. The next one from John and Joanne Meyer, 739 Lake Shore Drive. If the Klick property is to be rezoned, more time is needed to study the changes and for Klick to be more specific in his plans and his timeframe. The letter informing us of the Klick request was postmarked December 31st. We did not receive it till January 6th. This is not enough time to continue, to consider such a major change and we wonder why it's being rushed through. We also wonder if all the property needs to be rezoned at the same time. We suggest that the hearing be continued for at least four months so a committee of adjacent landowners can meet and discuss the ramifications of such a dramatic land-use change. We believe a plan that is agreeable to all involved is possible, but it will take more time. For those reasons, we're definitely against the rezoning application for now. Next one is from Marlene Jenison, 857 Kate's Estates Drive. My concerns, the old course is no place for hotel, resort, and retail, et cetera. This is a single-family residential neighborhood. I do not want to see it rezoned to commercial. I say this because I truly feel that it will significantly, in a negative way, affect our quiet neighborhood. What will this do to my taxes? This next one is from Fred and Nancy Wohman of 647 Lake Shore Drive. Reasons, we do not want Sauk Center rezoned. Sauk Center has been a home to many Sauk Center residents for many years. A great many of those residents have and still do live in the area of the old golf course. We love our homes and we take pride in keeping our homes in great shape and looking nice. We love our lake and the ability to spend time at our leisure, enjoying fishing, some water sports without being disturbed in our backyard. If we allow our area to be rezoned, it would disturb our wonderful little area in the following ways. What has been proposed would increase the amount of traffic in town as well as in our area. It would increase the amount of traffic on the lake, amounting to more boats, jet skis, waterboards on the lake, as well as the possibility for accidents. Disturbances for those who want to enjoy some fishing or just a quiet sunset boat ride. The idea of putting rental condominiums and townhomes on the golf club property is absolutely absurd. I spent many years managing rental properties and I know the perils. We would have paper bags, garbage bags, and just trash in general flying all over the end of town. They also love loud music. This would absolutely not be tolerated in our area. And with an entertainment stage in the plan, I suspect they are planning to bring in bands for their musical entertainment. I lived in Winston where once a year they'd bring in bands for entertainment. They attract people from miles around. We live three miles from the field where they set up their bands and we could hear them all over town. I definitely do not want to hear that again. We currently live in a very safe, clean, quiet environment and we love our area. Many of us are older and do not enjoy having our environment disturbed and I think as good law-abiding citizens, we deserve this for our retirement. We can park our boats behind our house or wherever we want in our yards, leave our fishing equipment in the boat, go into our home for the night, knowing when we go out in the morning, it will still be there. With strange people around, it may not be. I do not want people running through our yard at all hours to go to the beach. They certainly are not going to go all the way to the marina to go to the beach when there is a direct way that is shorter. I know this because I have seen teenagers run and jump over eight-foot privacy fences when they want to get someplace and after being threatened will pull a gun or a knife. There is also the threat of boat trailers and all manners of recreational vehicles setting on and along the street. I think our police department has enough to do the way it is without adding more to their jobs. Thank goodness, keep going. This one is from Sarah Kolkvet, 875 Lake Shore Drive. As a homeowner whose property value will be negatively affected, I would like to register my concerns and dismay with the proposed rezoning and redevelopment of the old course and its Lake Shore property. I have lived at 875 Lake Shore Drive for nearly 24 years. I was a member for many years of the Sauk Center Country Club and enjoyed the beautiful course, living in Sauk Center since the fall of 1988. I've also done my fair share of walking or driving around the popular scenic route. Dare I say that let's walk around the golf course is a familiar refrain for many Sauk Center residents. My concerns with the proposed changes are as follows. I feel a 60-slip marina is too large for the lake and Lake Shore available, and Lake Shore Drive. Where will people park? The road is quite narrow with no curb and gutter. How about the increased cross-traffic from people going to and from the golf course on foot or on golf cart? Will there be a designated crosswalk? Where will boarders place their waste, both human and, both human and man-made? Has a study been done as to the increased noise and air pollution? Along that note, were protocols followed as to the removal of trees and vegetation already completed over the last year? As stated, this is a common walk route for many people. How much will that be affected by the increased vehicle traffic? As for the proposal of new residential construction on the course itself, I have the following concerns. How much will I, as a current homeowner, be charged for the assumed needed upgrades for sewer and water lines? How about the curb and gutters I assume might be needed to be added to the existing roadway? Has consideration to the fact that the outlook of this quiet neighborhood will be dramatically changed been given? We will go from a mostly single-family neighborhood, with the exception of the townhomes and apartment buildings along North Main, to a resort-type neighborhood with the possibility of congested traffic, higher noise levels, and obvious loss of natural scenic views. Will this proposed grocery and bait shop be available to the public, causing further traffic to the area? Will the City of Sock Center benefit from the redevelopment, or just the business and property owners? And what will be the cost of these benefits to the rest of us? Both, both the current adjacent property owners and the whole community has used this area as a quiet respite of beauty and recreation. Has enough time and consideration of the effects of these proposals been given? As the pictorial information provided, it clearly, is clearly not to scale. I feel people deserve to see a more realistic depiction of the impact. Will that be given to us? Because of an exposure to COVID-19, I will most likely be unable to attend the meeting in person. Please do not see that as an indication of how strongly I propose, propose this, I oppose this plan. I respectfully submit my objections to this proposal, and welcome further study of it by the Planning Commission." And that was Sarah Coltvet at 875 Lake Shore Drive. The next one is from Tom and Marjwelly, 859 Kates Estates Drive. "We are in opposition to the proposed rezoning and planned development of the old golf course and its Lake Shore properties. We moved to this area because of the peace and quiet surroundings. It is ideal for senior citizens. The road around this area would not be able to handle the influx of traffic, boats, hotel, and water park guests. Where would everyone park? To have boat slips on the lake would impede the use of the lake for homeowner and normal summer lake activities. Thank you for your consideration." The next one from Matt Williams, 651 Lake Shore Drive. "My name is Matt Williams, and I live at 651 Lake Shore Drive. My parents built the house in 1969 and 1970, and I was born in 1973 and raised there with a feeling of a safe childhood in a quiet neighborhood. I've been blessed with the opportunity to buy the family home and raise my own family in a way that I remember when I was young. My concern is with the increased traffic and out-of-towners renting those properties and using this area to blow off steam and not have the responsibility of keeping a clean environment and respectful mannerisms about themselves. I know there are townhomes and apartments that have gone up on the old homeschool property, and I can tell you that there has been an increase in both automobile and foot traffic, and I see that the apartment complex is being added to now as well. With the proposed rezoning and its intended addition, it will be like having a small city in our backyard, perhaps a suburb of Sock Center. I am not in favor for rezoning this property." The next one is Marlene Moore, 883 Lake Shore Drive. "My name is Marlene Moore. I live at 883 Lake Shore Drive. I have enjoyed this peaceful area of the City of Sock Center since moving into my home in 1971. One great concern I have is the amount of traffic that would be anticipated with the development of the marina and on the course itself. Both the amount of traffic and the speed of the traffic on the road in front of my house have greatly increased already since the extension of Lake Shore Drive and the Lake Bridge Drive to connect Highway 71 to the east. The road is narrow, and already cars need to wait for traffic to pass if there is a vehicle parked along the road. Where would all of the marina-related vehicles park? The road around the golf course is a popular route for walkers, runners, families with children on bicycles and in strollers, and hospital workers, as they see it as a safe and quiet residential area to walk. I regularly see, regularly see three different households that either live out of town or on the south edge of town, drive and park to walk around the course. I fear the traffic, the traffic and parking would be detrimental to all of those individuals and families. The area of Sock Lake to the north of the golf course is narrow and small and already heavily used this summer. Adding a 60-slip marina would, I fear, add way too much watercraft in an area, an already busy area of the lake. I had a paddleboard sink, paddleboat sink due to a heavy wave action this past summer, and the added water activity wave action would be very detrimental to the shorelines in this area of the lake. I'm also concerned with the effect of the proposed development of a marina and proposed development on the golf course on property value. My quiet residential home would now lose value due to commercial retail activities and higher traffic levels just feet away. Will I be responsible for part of the cost of making changes to the road and the other utilities that are likely needed, but as now are not needed? I am opposed, I am opposed to this rezoning application." Almost done. This one is from Bill Krantz, 603 Country Club Road. "To us, this looks like a very large project that requires more time and more study. We'd not, we would not be against a house in front of our house, but would be against a resort or hotel. Count us as opposed to rezoning until more information is available." The next one is Katie Dieterman. "To whom it may concern, we recently received information of the proposed redevelopment of the old course and the Lake Shore property owned by it, and we, we see many concerns, but today I will highlight a few of them. My first question for Mr. Click and the city would be, is this the most appropriate place to build such extravagant structures in the middle of a single-family neighborhood? Daily, we see many neighbors, kids, and community members running up and down the street, as over the years, these homes have become a safe place to raise a family. The streets were not designed to trap, to handle the flow of traffic this proposed, this, this proposal would need, or the parking, speaking of parking, I see zero parking spaces to accommodate the vehicles that would need to stay, and how about the 60-boat pontoon trailers? Where might those all be parked? Where might 60-boat slips fit on the lake? There's simply not enough land to place them without having his system stick halfway out in the lake. The lake, also known as Sock River, is just a widening of the river. On an average day in the summer, things already get tight on that end of the lake, and now we would have to bring the extra condition and safety into play. What would be his plan to keep guests off the neighboring lawns? Is there a plan to handle the noise control? Recently, Lake Shore Drive acquired a double VRBO rental, and that single-family home property has shaken the neighborhood. Its very first weekend opened multiple cups were at the property. Is Sock Center Police Department planning to hire extra, extra staff to handle the vacation commotion? Lastly, some community members and city staff have noted it would be a great asset to Sock Center community to drive the people into the area businesses. This proposal has people coming and never needing to leave with all the groceries they would need on a vacation stay, bait, gas, liquor, restaurants, and even a mini shopping center from the look of the proposed pictures. How can this be an asset to the rest of the area businesses, but instead be competition?" The last one, I think. Richard and Jane Bylet. "As current residents of 835 Lake Shore Drive and the City of Sock Center, my husband and I are responding to the recent notice we received of a public hearing to consider amendment to the current zoning map for the old course at 606 Lake Shore Drive and the Lake Shore portion of that property. We are year-round residents of Sock Center and see on a daily basis the use and benefits of our quiet neighborhood, which brings not only to us who live here, but for those who live and work in the community. Our street is active daily throughout each season, with individuals and families out riding bikes, walking dogs, jogging, and even staff from the nearby hospital out for a quick outdoor walk. It has been used by people in wheelchairs, walkers, and those pushing strollers. It is a safe, quiet road with primarily neighborhood traffic. For those of us on the north end of town, we're able to enjoy walks and outdoor time without crossing a main highway or getting in our cars to drive to other walking paths. The proposed plan use development for the old course and the adjacent Lake Shore property would significantly impact this one aspect of our neighborhood. Based upon number and type of building proposed, a significant increase in traffic can be expected from the PUD in our single-family residential area. This would diminish the safe and regular use of the area by residents who live and work here regularly, as well as those traveling to enjoy their own lake properties. We have concerns like likelihood of increased traffic and parking on or around the sides of the street that would also impact parking and safety of residents and their guest vehicles. This adversely affects our use and enjoyment of our property and our homes. In addition to increased road traffic and parking difficulties, another significant concern is lake traffic. Last summer, we saw a significant increase in lake activity, increased boating, jet ski, and fishing, all increased. Sock Lake is not very wide, boat traffic already heavy, and with expected increase in boat traffic due to proposal of an addition of a marina for 60 boats produces several concerns. Safe boating on the lake, safe use of non-motorized lake toys, as well as potential Lake Shore erosion from further boat activity with the wake hitting the Lake Shore. As the lake is narrow, boats traveling through are usually closer to one shore or the other, as there is very little middle to travel. On days with a lot of lake activity, we had some very large waves splashing and pushing water and debris up on our Lake Shore. This is one reason why there are not many sandy beaches on our side of the lake. As it is now, we avoid letting our grandchildren enjoy the water when there's a lot of lake activity. It is also a struggle to safely dock the boat after a large event. This concern, along with the increased noise and air, air pollution, increased garbage congestion, and people and vehicles in a narrow area. The roadway and family homes are in close proximity to this proposed Lake Shore use, and if made, would negatively impact walking and driving to home. This, along with a proposal of gas being sold in the middle of this residential neighborhood, raises questions of safety for our family and enjoyment of use of our property. Also noted on the proposal, it is an outdoor venue building, bait shop, and off-sale liquor which is otherwise available in the community. Addition of these, outdoor venue in particular, would negatively impact the very nature of our family neighborhood. We, in particular, bought in this location looking for future retirement, as many others. The change in zoning and planned use development of the old course would negatively, negatively impact this lovely residential neighborhood. Richard and Janet Bylet, 835 Lake Shore Drive."
Can you hear me? Can you hear me in the back?
Yep, you're good.
Okay. And added to those emails, I did receive about seven phone calls. Majority of them were for clarification and information, and then a few of them did follow up with emails that either I read or Vicky read, and some of them just wanted to copy the packet for information. So in your packet for the Planning Commission, you have a copy of the application, and that is on page eight. And I don't want to read all this because we've been doing a lot of reading. So I'm hoping that, you know, the Planning Commission members have had a chance to read this, and if you have any questions of myself or of the applicants, you know, please ask.
Count, the commission, do you have any questions or concerns at this point? Okay. I think what we'll do is keep moving on since, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the commission in favor or against the proposal? If you didn't already write a letter that we read into the record.
I appreciate your attention.
But go ahead. State your name and address for us. Thank you.
My name is Egan Damont Katke. I'm the author of many of the letters here, or the genesis of the letter that provided information to the neighborhood. I reside in Eagan, Minnesota. I have a house here, which we bought two summers ago at 867 Lake Shore Drive. The purpose of the house is so that we can retire and spend more time here. Due to COVID, we've been here about 50% of the time, actually, we spent almost all the summer here in Sock Center as a choice. We left Eagan. We left Eagan because, Eagan, and actually, I do live on the golf course redevelopment, so I'm well aware of what happens. We left Eagan because it is congested, and it is loud, and then no matter what you do, there is peep-up. We moved here because we enjoy your lake. We love your city. I see potential for growth in so many areas, and it was the one thing that drew us here. So when I got the notice of public hearing, I am a real estate attorney. It is what I do for a living. My interest was piqued, and I immediately contacted the next day, when I got it on Tuesday, was contact Sarah, who is wonderfully informative and allowed us to make information and provided the packet on Friday that you've also received. My concern is not that you are, you are doing redevelopment. Every neighborhood, every community goes through planning stages, growth stages, and redevelopment. My concern is that the process of the redevelopment in this, in this instance is not taking into account what you already have. A great redevelopment takes your community, enhances it, brings in new profit centers, brings in new interest, but it keeps the character of your community safe. It keeps it, it produces it, it expands it, it welcomes it. I think by the people here, you can understand that this proposed redevelopment and the slamming through of a rezoning into a level, and I understand the 30,000-foot view. Ladies and gentlemen, that's what you do. You get it up here, you do a 30,000-foot view so that you can open the window to add all these new projects in. The first step is zoning, but that's what you do. You open the window, and then when you say you can't do that, the developer has every right to say, "We got the zoning to do it. You gave it to us." So this is your first opportunity to make the statement as to how you want your city and your neighborhood to grow. You have an amazing, single-family residence neighborhood up there. It's been known that way for years. The old course was grandfathered in. It continues in its wonderful moment, and again, you're hearing 100 years of a golf course. That's an impressive feat. That's something to be celebrated. The plans, the opening of a, of this redevelopment and the rezoning into a commercial multi-use does not fit the character of this neighborhood. It does not bring amenities to this neighborhood that would be benefited to the residents who are already there. It brings in a commercial aspect that has not been appreciated by the neighborhood and is not being welcomed by the neighborhood, nor does it fit the neighborhood. I'm going to start with the 60-boat marina. I boat on this lake. That's one of the reasons we bought our house. We've spent many, many days looking at DNR maps. I can tell you numbers, facts, fish. My husband's huge into it. I got sucked into it because I wanted a place in a boat in a great lake. You have a great lake, by the way. You have a very, very impressive lake, very desirable. You have amazing resorts that are struggling right now because of COVID, but hopefully next summer they can come back, and we can give them business like we've been trying to do. A 60-boat slip in 400, little over 460 feet is an untenable idea. There is no parking. There are no water facilities. There's no bathrooms. There's no trash facilities. There's not even room to put that down there. If you walk down there, you know on the very close end, on the west side, that strip is at maybe 20 feet wide. As you move more east towards Nelson's House, which it borders on residential homes, that strip is maybe 40 to 60 feet long. That's it. You want to put 60-boat slips in there. I ask you, as a personal user of a watercraft, how many times do you see one person on a boat? You have three, four, five, six people on a boat. That means you have one, two families. Even if all these slips were rented to only long-term users, every weekend we'd see an influx of 60 to 90 cars on the street that is dedicated for residential use. If you park a car on one side of our street, on Lake Shore Drive, you cannot feasibly pass two cars next to each other. We have a fire issue. If you try to get a fire, there's, and through there, if there's any emergency vehicles, ambulance, please, needed on that road. You can't. I have, again, dealt with development. I know it, but the best development has as its goal to revitalize, revigorate, and enhance the community it's going into. This request for rezoning application proves none of that. It doesn't even have at its core, as any of its goals, according to their own application, influence enhancement of the neighborhood. It seeks to bring in a completely different use, which is not even part, by the way, of the city's comprehensive plan for this area. The city's comprehensive plan says its first and foremost primary goal is additional housing. This plan knocked additional housing off the road, put it in a hotel, puts in commercial, and then as a nod, ends up with townhomes. A very small strip down the middle, which to me says most likely not residents, long-term residents. It says vacation residents and/or residents who are going to be maybe here, you know, the snowbirds. Nothing against snowbirds, snowbirds, I love y'all. Thank you. But that's the people who buy towns. They're not long-term residents who want to be here, raise their kids, support your school systems, support your youth sports, create a community. I will tell you in closing, the one thing that's been amazing to me and my husband, and then again, was evident to me on Saturday, when I got the pleasure and the honor of walking around to meet all my neighbors on Saturday, with Ken Nelson, my other neighbor, who is, I think, knows everybody, was how amazingly close this neighborhood is. These are people who deeply care about what's happening. Their voices deserve to be heard. Their wishes and their desires and their plans for the neighborhood deserve to be examined, appreciated, and incorporated in any future development. That is how you enhance a neighborhood. That is how you enhance a neighborhood through development. I urge you to either table this motion, table this application until that can be studied and additional neighborhood input can be given or rejected until something further is brought, which actually looks like a plan. I thank you for your time. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that likes to speak to the commission? State your name and address, please.
My name is Mike Dishar. I'm at 2562 Akron Drive, up on the north end. So why am I concerned? I'm concerned because I'm the current president of the Big Sock Lake Association. So Amy, I totally agree with you, everything you said about the lake. I'm not going to regurgitate all the information that's been read before. You all understand all of that that's going on. I do want to say that I'm very disappointed, though, that it was two days ago that I heard, fortunately from you, that there was even this under consideration, that this has gotten this advanced and I've not heard a thing. And many people on the Lake Association Board were surprised to hear about this. We're certainly not going to speak to the development ideas of the city. That's not our business. Our concern is the lake. And yes, a 60-boat pier, slip, whatever you want to call it, is going to have a huge impact on the boat traffic. And as far as the impact that that's going to have to the lake, it's only starting there. People in the know understand that any type of a hard-packed material is going to cause an erosion issue, and the more hard-packed you have, whether that's tar or grass is even considered a hard pack, that's going to increase the amount of water and runoff that gets into the lake, then the phosphors and all that kind of stuff. It's just, it's kind of a downhill slide. I'm not against the proposal for just those reasons, but those are the ones that I'm going to speak to. And I'm also very concerned about the idea of having gas available in this property. It's always a good idea in people's minds to have gas available, but every place that I have been, and I've been in a lot, that have gas available, it is not done sanitarily. I shouldn't say every place, I've seen a couple where it's done well, but it's very expensive to do well, and I'm just very concerned. We have enough issues with our lake as it is, but if it's done well, and if this should happen to go forward, I would really hope that we would be able to work very closely with whoever is doing this development to make sure that all the restrictions, the regulations, every precaution can be taken to ensure that the quality of the lake stays the way it is. Because, you're right, we've got a great asset here, and we want to build that asset up and celebrate that asset, not destroy it. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the commission? Go ahead.
My name is Ed Seaver. I live at 731 Country Club Road. I would like to ask how many notices were sent out for the hearing of property owners within the 350 feet?
Certainly.
Okay. Along with that, and the emails that have been sent in, I would like to know how many of those notifications attended tonight?
That I don't have an idea.
If everybody signed up?
If everybody signed up, then...
Right. I understand. Is there going to be any call for show of hands for opposition or agreement with the proposal?
Basically, I think what we're doing is you call, as of right now, what I got down is probably about 21 noes based on what we've got already. I don't know if a show of hands is going to work, but that's what the public hearing is for, is anyone that's in opposition or in favor to come to the podium and speak for it. A show of hands, we don't necessarily prove that that doesn't work.
Okay.
Because we have to have some form of proof that they have residency and importance in that area.
Has the city planning, the city engineer investigated improvement of Lake Shore Drive from Country Club Road the rest of the way around the golf course to North Main?
As of right now, I don't think we've really delved into that issue yet. One of the concerns that I do have, and just cut it short, you know, not to cut you short, the sewer line on the west side of the property is basically behind the residences between the lake and the houses. So basically, anything that this development would cause is going to have, we'd have to find a way to get it down there, and there hasn't been any engineering studies, hasn't been doing anything. The whole process, you know, and I was going to mention this later, but I'll do it now if you don't mind. Basically, the way government is supposed to work is when, say, any one of you comes in and has an idea or a dream to do something, you bring it to the city hall, we take it through the public hearing process. That isn't giving anybody permission to do anything. The reason why we look at every process and we investigate it and look at it the way we need to look at it, rather than say, "No, it's not happening," or "Yes, it should happen," is because we've got a few instances here in town, and I've lived here all my life. We've got a few instances here in town where it's been over 20 years and they go, "What was that planning commission and council thinking at the time they did that stupid move?" Not to be blunt, but that's basically what it was. And one of it is when they could shut Oak Street off here and made everybody go all the way around, you know? That used to be straight through. If the time would have been taken, I think, to look into the future rather than make a gut decision on yes, no, or otherwise, and investigated it, I don't know if it would have happened. But that's one of the things with me being a lifelong resident and also being on council and mayor now for 16 years, is I don't want to have someone 20 years from now come back and say, "What an idiot he was," you know? Not that I'm looking for a legacy, but that's basically what government does. You have to look at it from up here. Is, there's other rules and regulations out there. Apartment house, that's high density. Even if this passed, it wouldn't pass because of shoreline maintenance. No high-density residence can be within 1,000 feet of a lake shore. Unless somebody has a magic wand and throws it away and bypasses the shoreline maintenance management thing, high density isn't going to work. Basically, the whole golf course wouldn't be able to, except for maybe the southeast corner could possibly be high density. Anything built along the west side of the golf course, we got to look at where, how do we get to the sewer lines? Now, are they big enough? If they're capable enough, or are we going to look at tearing the whole neighborhood apart just because of one development? That's all stuff we need to look at.
Exactly. The view from 30,000 feet is a nice view, but we're dealing with it right here at ground level. The presentation tonight is sorely lacking in detail that I know you realize. There's no streets, no parking. Before the city can do anything with this, the north end of Lake Shore Drive, they're going to have to know how many sewer hookups, how many water hookups you have. Basically, you've got two options. I'm sorry, but you've got two options. You can table it, or you can deny it.
Thank you.
You couldn't possibly approve it with what we know now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to?
Chris Seaver, I own 731 Country Club Road. I grew up on the 13th largest lake in Minnesota, Lake Minnewaska. Every Friday night, we could sit out on the porch and watch the folk parade go by as they drove on our little lake shore road to get to the resort. Now, despite the fence between our property and the resort, it didn't keep them on their side of the fence. They kept on our property, doing whatever they wanted to. They would go out on our dock and use it because the other one was full. And I don't think that's going to change. We can talk about infrastructure, we can talk about nuts and bolts, but let's think about the human impact on all of this. In the 30-plus years since I started paying attention to what was going on in Glenwood, no hotel, no condos, whether it was 35 years ago or in the last five years, have made any big change to the town. It hasn't added to the main street in Glenwood. Matter of fact, it's gotten pretty scary on what the main street in Glenwood has gotten to be like. But what I have seen a change in is rude and inconsiderate behavior. Let's go back to that human factor. There's a low spot in Lake Minnewaska that they have started to raft on, just like they rafted on Lake Minnetoka. And if you don't know what Lake Minnetoka is like with all their rafting, it is a cesspool. Cans, food, human excrement, you name it, they just throw it in the lake. Also, I lived in Starbuck. I had a bed and breakfast in Starbuck. And despite being well off of the lake, I could hear those motorboats screaming at all hours of the day and night. I could hear those jet skis being annoying. I can't imagine what it would be like to have them so close to the residents here. We left Starbuck because it had turned into hillbilly ghetto, and we just couldn't stand it anymore. But we didn't move out of that just to come here to deal with more rude behavior by inconsiderate tourists. Like I said, we can talk about infrastructure, we can address all that, but how are you going to keep them on their own side of the fence? Once you approve this multi-use permit, you really have no recourse. It can happen. I don't want to be picking garbage or people off of the yard. Nobody else wants them cutting across their yard, and they will. I yell at the kids. If they'd wanted you to walk there, they'd have put concrete. But most people don't get that. So I can't imagine what it's going to do to all of a sudden have this amusement land in the middle of residential. We've already heard how the VRBO, Airbnb goes, which is unfortunate. And we didn't rehab that hoarder garbage house just to deal with more noise and light pollution. And that's exactly what we will deal with. There's nothing we will be able to do about shutting off all the lights over there. We moved here because it would be quiet, we didn't have to deal with all this light pollution, and you can't change it. I would encourage you to vote no on a multi-use permit, simply because there is no way you can control the human factor, and it will negatively impact the neighborhood. It did 30 years ago, and I don't think people's behaviors have gotten any better in that time. Just a second. And I would also encourage you to vote no, because we do have no recourse. If or when promises are made, if in five years, well, we can't, we're not going to do that anymore because of da-da-da-da-da, we have no recourse, it's already been done. So I would please encourage you to table it, if not vote no at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to the commission? Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the commission? Call a third time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the commission? Okay. Is there any questions for anyone from the commission, for staff? Hearing nothing, our public hearing is now closed. We will reconvene the regular meeting. Next thing on the agenda is our action items. Amendment to the zoning map. We've had public hearing, we've received testament. And does the commission have any, any concerns or what would they like to do? My opinion is, is to table it.
That's my opinion, I was just going to say the same thing. This is an extremely ambitious project, so for us to rush through any type of a change would not be in the community's best interest. So I agree, I can make a motion to table it.
Okay. We have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ken? The reason why, my opinion was to table it, and I know that he was looking at it, is if we deny it at this level without looking into it more, it more likely is going to get appealed to the city council, and it's not going to go any farther, you know? Then the city council is going to have to table it and go through the whole process. I'd rather have the commission do as much legwork and get everything done, get the community involved, you know, at least get more information out on it, rather than vote no and walk away. I'm trying to ease the pain a little bit for everyone here, along with the applicant, because he deserves his right to have due process also as far as being heard with what his idea is. So, I don't know if the commission has any other comments, but otherwise, we have a motion and a second to table this until we get more information and more information out to the public. I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries for in favor, none against. Thank you.
Can I just say thank you for the open dialogue? It's very much needed.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you for all coming.
I had a few people ask me to put the packet on our city webpage, so I will have that up there tomorrow morning.
And we do have an opening on the planning commission. We're still in the meeting yet. I'm sorry.
I got you.
No, no, I just reconvened.
Warren.
I reconvened, yes.
Warren?
Yes.
If our new system worked, we will be putting this meeting on YouTube in the morning. So if you want to review it, or have your friends look at it, or whatever, we have the new camera up there, and so this is actually our first planning commission member meeting that we have recorded to put on the local access channel, like the city council meeting, so you can refer to it there.
Then we will move on to reports and presentations. Sarah?
So in your packet, on page 43, you have the November and December building permit reports. November this year, we only had like four permits with $76,000 of construction value, and last year we had nine permits for a total of $156,000. December of this year, we had six permits. December of this year, we had six permits with eighty-six thousand dollars of value. Last year, we had six for eighty-six thousand dollars of value, which is pretty normal. October, November, December are usually fairly slow, and so are January and February. But at the end of the year last year, we had like four point two million dollars in building value. This year, during twenty-twenty and the COVID, we did like seven point four million dollars worth of construction value.
None? Okay. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. We'll then move on to informational items. You want to speak of them?
Yeah, so on page forty-seven, you have the list of our meeting schedule calendar for all the boards and commissions. We did update the fee schedule. I think we increased the zoning permit fee. And then you also have GTS, Educational Events, has changed their name. And I think because of COVID, they're having this virtual symposium, and it's, I think, for like five days. And so I'm going to look into more of that, if we could maybe host it for our planning commission and whoever else, you know, city council members or park board or anybody else wants to sit in and listen on that. I'm going to see if we can get that to work out. Because right now, they're not holding any classes in person because of COVID.
Right. Any questions about that or if you're interested, contact Sarah.
Just reading this, I have no interest in this. I don't see any pull for me to even have an interest in it. Can you elaborate more on what's written here?
I really haven't had a chance to look at it myself. I just got the emails from GTS, and so I can kind of find out more information and get that out to you guys.
Do they have a website on here? T L G Govapalooza, or is that just the name of the event?
That's the name of the event. So you go to like GTS Educational Events.
If we can have more information, but right now, this does not interest me at all.
Okay. I'll get some information out to you.
Okay. Any other questions on the informational items? If not, this brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye, so moved.
We have a motion by Ken, second by Linda. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.